All right, well, we are going to, uh, let's start with a word of prayer and then we'll kind of do a quick review of these first five verses because it's kind of its own foundation as we move forward. So, and I'm pretty excited about this. This is, yeah, this is kind of next level here. All right, so let's, uh, let's pray. Lord God, thank you, uh, once again for a gathering of your people to study your word that even at 2,000 years old, the vision that you gave your servant John speaks to us, enlightens us, and draws us nearer to you today. Father, we pray that blessing over tonight, the study of your word, the discussion around it, that it, that your spirit would guide us and direct us and reveal these things to us, draw us deeper into the knowledge of who you are, of how you have ordered things here on the earth. Help us to break out of the time and generations in which we have been raised and taught within this world. Give us that insight to see things, to see this world as you see them. I pray that that as we walk through this tonight, that in the coming week, that it'll be your word that clings to us and challenges us and causes us to see things differently, that we would be changed, transformed into who you are calling each of us to be. Pray these things. In the name of the Lamb, in Jesus's name we pray. Amen. All right, so we, uh, I don't even know if I'm gonna use a stool tonight. All right, so last time we were talking about, uh, the Lamb and the 144,000 in the first, uh, six, five verses here. "Then I looked and behold, the Lamb was standing on Mount Zion, and with him 144,000, having his name and the name of his father written on their foreheads. And I heard a voice from heaven like the sound of many waters and like the sound of loud thunder. And the voice which I heard was like the sound of harpist playing on their harps. And they sang a new song before the throne and before the four living creatures and the elders. And no one could learn the song except the 144,000 who had been purchased from the earth. There are, these are the ones who have not been defiled with women, for they have kept themselves chaste. These are the ones who follow the Lamb wherever he goes. These have been purchased from among men as first fruits to God and to the Lamb. And no lie was found in their mouth; they are blameless." So what an introduction for this group. So here we are, Revelation 14, the Lamb and the 144,000, they're on Mount Zion. One of the things we talked about is that real and actual Mount Zion, or some had taken this as kind of figuratively as being in heaven. So, and then we were also talking about the 144,000, few Jehovah's Witness jokes in there, but then we were talking that really what this looks like, and most scholars agree, and it's not because of the chances of them being left out, but that the 144, just kidding. I mean, if we were to add up all the Christians since, uh, 33 AD, what are the odds?
I need more papers.
Oh, okay. I thought I was gonna get a talking to. Sherry's known me long enough, she'd be the one to do it. It's okay. Are we out of 14? Oh, no. I can print one off the break. So, okay. But, so the idea is, you know, since 33 AD, how many Christians have there been? So 144,000 of those, like, I mean, what are the odds? Right? But, so the joke was that these scholars are interpreting this as the 144,000, 12 times 12 times 1,000. Basically, this is a symbolic number of all the believers, of all of God's people. So, and then we cross-reference that, uh, with chapter, in chapter seven, where they're going through tribe by tribe, pointing out what tribes are missing, what ones are included. But looking at this, and these aren't just Jewish or Jewish background Christians. Uh, these are all of Israel, and so then that led us to Ephesians 2 and Romans 11, and just understanding this grafting in theology that Paul, I believe Paul has, that the church is a spiritual Israel. Or what we refer to as the church is really a spiritual Israel, where Gentiles have been grafted into it. So, any questions on that? Because it's important to have that foundation as we move forward. Because we're gonna quickly move from this group to another group. Everybody good on, on that? Okay. So now, actually, one other thing here, uh, when we were talking about the ones that have not been defiled with women, we had talked about the idea of idolatry being referenced as, um, adult, uh, I'm sorry, idolatry as being adultery, like against God, that you were prostituting yourself with other gods by worshiping them. And so these had not worshipped anybody or anything else. And that's gonna be important as we read these next few sections. So, all right, no questions on that? Then we are gonna move on with verse six. Okay. "And I saw another angel flying in mid-heaven, having, having an eternal gospel to preach to those who live on the earth and to every nation and tribe and tongue and people. And he said with a loud voice, 'Fear God and give him glory, because the hour of his judgment has come. Worship him who made the heaven and the earth and the sea and springs of waters.'" And another angel, a second one, followed, saying, "Fallen, fallen is Babylon the Great, she who has made all the nations drink of the wine of the passion of her immorality." Okay, I'm gonna pause right there. So, in verse six, we're gonna go to Heiser for this one. So here in verse six, "Flying isn't proof that angels have wings." "It is of interest that this is the earliest reference in Jewish or Christian literature to an angel apart from cherubim and seraphim." Everybody remember the difference between cherubim and seraphim? Okay, cherubim are the animal cross-type creatures with wings. The seraphim have six wings, and they are generally, like, the cherubim are around the throne, and the seraphim you see flying up and around the myriads around the throne. The word angel simply means messenger. Messenger. So really, any person or entity could be an angel. We just don't see the cherubim or seraphim utilized as messengers. So, kind of important distinction there. But what we have here is the first reference to an angel flying. Just because it says flying doesn't mean they have wings.
How do they fly?
Well, with zero-gravity technology. I'm just kidding. So while cherubim and seraphim are described as having wings and as flying, angels in general are not. So even here, the angel is not described as having wings. The first clear reference to angels and demons with wings is found in Tertullian's Apologies, chapter 22, verse 8. So, thank you, early church history. Just kidding, Tertullian. So, um, so taking this reference here and assuming that it gets applied, and this is where some of that confusion takes place, right? So, I mean, we just encountered something here. If there was an assumption that all angels had wings, where did that come from? Well, I mean, Tertullian was, boy, 200s? 250s? So as he was writing, so it comes from very, very early on. And it's still wrong. That's okay. Like, just because somebody's from early church history doesn't mean that they were flawless and perfect in their thoughts and their theology and all of these different things. So, you know, that's why we continually revisit what we think about these things. So this is kind of that iron sharpening iron with every generation. We can go back and comb through it. Now, that being said, so one other note from Heiser here, uh, he had a couple of good ones. So, the phrase here, uh, does everybody have "flying in mid-heaven"? Mid-heaven? The ESV, I think, has something different, maybe "flying overhead"? I'm sorry?
Flying through the sky.
Flying through the sky? Mid-air, okay. Any others? Okay, so those, yeah, does he might have an ESV that says "flying overhead"? Okay, there you go. Okay, so it's interesting, the, the, a literal translation of this phrase is "flying in mid-heaven." "It means that the angel appeared in the place where he could be seen and heard by everyone on earth since his message was directed to all human beings." This is Heiser making this note. Uh, actually, he's quoting Aune, Dr. Aune, A-U-N-E. "This, of course, presupposes a world shaped like a flat disk rather than a sphere." Make sure we include that one in the notes and the tags for the video. Just kidding. And then Aune goes on and just, you know, where that idea came from in, uh, history, uh, anything from the Greeks and the Romans. So, yeah, it's kind of, it's fascinating, um, but the idea is still, you know, flying directly overhead, in the sky, mid-heaven, all of those phrases, even if you were to talk about the different, you know, levels of heaven, you know, mid-heaven would still be where the birds and everything fly. So that is how this message is being announced. I just brought up flat earth. I'm not even gonna ask if anyone has any questions. So, moving on. All right, so like the eagle of woe in chapter eight, verse 13, "it flies in mid-air to be seen and heard by all." So just a, uh, quick reference here, uh, let's go to chapter eight, verse 13. "Then I looked and I heard an eagle flying in mid-heaven," saying, uh, does the ESV have "directly overhead" there?
Uh, yes.
Nice. Everybody else, same thing as what you just read in 14?
It says mid-air.
Mid-air? Is that what it said in 14 too?
In mine it did, yes.
Okay. I'm always curious about continuity, even like within a single translation, right? So, okay, "So then I looked and I heard an eagle flying in mid-heaven, saying with a loud voice, 'Woe, woe, woe to those who dwell on the earth because of the remaining blasts of the trumpet of the three angels who are about to sound.'" So obviously that was between, um, the trumpets. So, all right. So, a couple of notes here, here we go. All right. Now I want to talk about the eternal gospel. That's where we're going here, all right? And I really appreciated, like, from Kaster, from Keener, and from Mounts, uh, they all had some really good pieces to contribute to this. So I want to start with Mounts. So the proclamation goes out over those living on the earth. The angel's message is called the eternal gospel. It is not the gospel of God, so this is Mounts, is not the gospel of God's redeeming grace in Christ, in Christ Jesus, but as the following verse shows, "a summons to fear, honor, and worship the Creator." It is an eternal gospel in that it sets forth the eternal purpose of God for people. Fear, honor, and worship the Creator. "It relates to judgment and salvation in the coming eternal age. Those who dwell on the earth are further specified as every nation, tribe, tongue, and people." So I thought that was really interesting for Mounts to include that. "It's an eternal gospel in that it sets forth the eternal purpose of God for people." Remember, when we say the word gospel, that's a trans, translation in and of itself. Like it's a borrowed, like an old Anglo-Saxon word, God's spell, and it goes back to something where it's a good news or good message. So for, for Keener, uh, "The angel's good news here is the vindication of God's people by judgment on the wicked." Because the activity, oh, okay, I'm gonna leave that one. So Keener says, "The angel's good news is the vindication of God's people by judgment on the wicked." From Kaster, "John shapes the way that people are to hear the angel's message by calling it an eternal gospel, which means that he wants readers to receive it as good news for all generations." Now, we read through the chapter last time, and it gets pretty ugly. But that's why, that's why I value like, that's why I like what Kaster's saying here, is that he's framing it as good news. This is the overlap, I think, between his and Mount's and even Keener's. He wants to receive it as good news for all generations. "The message is good news or gospel, because God wants those of every nation and tribe and language and people to join in giving glory to their Maker, adding their praises to those of the chorus that celebrates around God's throne. The angel's voice recalls how the torrent of judgments unleashed by the seven trumpets was interrupted before utter devastation occurred, so that the inhabitants of the earth could come to fear and glorify God. Powers of evil may have overrun the earth, but God remains Lord. Beast may rise up from the sea and land, but God made the sea and the land, and will finally not surrender his world to the forces that terrorize it. The Creator has not abandoned the creation." So commentators are split, whether, so to repeat the question, um, is this a last chance for those who have accepted the mark, for those who are maybe in a category who have not accepted the mark, but not committed to Christ? Or is this a victory lap for those who have already accepted Christ? And, you know, commentators are split on it. What's my opinion? You know what? I would hope and pray that this, this is a last chance. If anybody is hearing this, don't wait for the last chance. Repent, believe the gospel, accept Jesus. Yeah, um, I mean, it's a scary, it's a scary warning about what's to come. Yeah, and you know what? Like, that's a picture of God's grace. I mean, as he is getting ready to pour out a final judgment on these groups, and including, like, what is to happen after? Like, for all of that, uh, yeah, I mean, that would be certainly a picture of his grace, and that is good news. Like, and that's, and this is the thing, is even as we want to shirk away from the coming judgment, right, I mean, we don't even talk about it very often as a culture, a Christian culture. Like, this is a reality, this is coming. We don't know when, right? And, you know, even if you were to read this book in a very linear fashion, and that there's one final end, which I think we all believe that, but as we've talked about, there are numerous ends that happen within countries and regions and different groups, like, because of persecution, because of beast entities that rise, and they, for some reason, Christians become a target. What a weird coincidence, right? I mean, these beast systems don't come up and be like, hmm, yeah, Christians, right? I mean, not without co-opting it and perverting it grossly into being something that it was not what Christ intended to be. That's another whole story, right? So, but as we're talking about this, I, I think that's why, like, it's important for us to see how John is framing this. One, we recognize that it's not just a message, it's good news. And it's eternal good news. And what we read here, "And I saw another angel flying in mid-heaven, having an eternal good message to preach to those who live on the earth and to every nation and tribe and tongue and people." That's everybody. That's absolutely everybody. That's not just the Jews. That's not just Roman citizens. That's absolutely everybody the world over. And what is that message? "He said with a loud voice, 'Fear God and give him glory, because the hour of his judgment has come. Worship him who made the heaven and the earth and sea and springs of water.'" So, just as Kaster was saying, that the Creator has not abandoned the creation. "For as bad as everything had gotten up until this point," I mean, think of the things that we just read in the last chapter alone. Right? I mean, you have the dragon, the beast from the sea, the beast of the earth. You have an image, right, that's causing people to die for not having taken the mark. I mean, some pretty horrific stuff that is targeting, that is challenging everybody's allegiance. And what you have kind of mixed into this is it's not the system the beast have created, or even an image the beast has created, but the Creator Himself that we should worship and fear and give glory to. And the good part is that he doesn't want competition, and he will get rid of the competition in his own time. That we don't just have to be hunted every day, or for generations, or in the age to come. All of this is going to be taken care of. The Creator, who is able to have made all of those things that were listed, the heaven and the earth, the sea and springs of water, he's remaking all of that. Oh, yeah, and we get to participate in a resurrection. And so when we come back, we get to enjoy those things, but guess who's not gonna be there? Well, to find that out, you get to read the next few verses. You even get to find out where they're gonna be while we get to enjoy this recreation. That's good news. I'm telling you, it's good news. God told John, John's telling us, I'm telling you, it's good news. But to the degree that we don't feel like it's good news, we better be going out and doing something about it. If this is, if this, if any of what we're about to read tonight just sits and sounds just super salty, like, okay, good, get out there and share the good news with everybody you know. Encourage every believer to do the same, and to stay strong and persevere. And for everybody who doesn't know Christ, show them Christ and share the good news with them. Right? I mean, what we're gonna read is pretty horrific. And we don't talk about it very much, but when we do, it leaves a mark. That's bad. But it's one of those things that sits with us because of how horrific it is. In the timeline?
Yeah.
So, so, one, what we had talked about was hopefully that there is time for people to repent, that just by hearing this message, somebody would, I mean, open their eyes and repent. But as far, you know, second question is, when in an overall timeline does this happen? So, so two things. One, if we are taking this as a message of encouragement from John to the believers in Asia Minor, to the seven churches, right? He is already, like, and spoiler alert, he's telling them that the beast and the systems of the beast, the ones that they are suffering under at that moment, 2,000 years ago, of the beast, the ones that they are suffering under at that moment, 2,000 years ago, all that's going to come to an end. That who they should really fear and who they should really follow is God. So this is a message that spoke 2,000 years ago. So it speaks today. It has spoken for the last 2,000 years. Because many of those systems are gone. Power has changed hands, empires have fallen. Everybody thought about the Roman Empire this week? Most days? And so, but then as we look forward, there's going to be a final end to these things. I mean, does that get into like, you know, the whole one world government stuff? Or is that just reigning empires that are all maybe aligned in a certain way against Christians? Maybe, there's plenty of those out there now. So, you know, it's kind of a both and it's, but the thing to get away from is just reading this like it's some distant future that is maybe another thousand years from now. There, there's kind of those two extremes, every generation thinking, we are the last one. And just absolutely panicking and living crazy, which usually doesn't involve sharing the gospel for some reason. But then on the other side of it is that, oh, this is, you know, it's been 2,000 years, probably going to be 2,000 more, don't even need to worry about it, don't even need to study it, let's just put it on the shelf with the other 65 books. But what we're talking about here is a book that speaks into our everyday life. It speaks into decisions that we make, you know, alliances and allegiance that we hold, how we function within society, relationship to government. And not just federal, right? I mean, at every level, what does it look like? So, I mean, this is completely relevant. And I mean, you know, in these very words, fear God and give him glory, because the hour of his judgment has come. Worship him who made the heavens and the earth and sea and springs of water. I mean, if you're just to take fear God and give him glory, and then to know that the hour of his judgment is coming, how does that frame your decision making? And especially to know what he's capable of in the next few verses. Verse eight. And another angel. So, oh, by the way, so angel number one, we have the eternal gospel, right? Also, I want to frame this, I think I said this last time. So a lot of times when we think of the gospel, we think of Jesus as Savior, right? And our redemption. But part of the gospel, when we're talking about the gospel, the good news, is the lordship of Jesus as well. That's part of it. It's a package deal. You cannot accept him as Savior without also accepting him as Lord. And recognizing the role he has in the fulfillment of all things. So that's a big deal. So, but angel number one, verses six and seven, we have the gospel or the eternal gospel. And then here in verse eight, we have a second angel. And this is one bringing, calling out the judgment on Babylon. So let's read verse eight. And another angel, a second one followed, saying, fallen, fallen is Babylon the Great, she who has made all the nations drink of the wine of the passion of, of her immorality. So we have a second angel now appearing. And apparently flying in midair as well, follows the first. And announces the fall of Babylon the Great. So the introduction of this symbolic reference without explanation assumes the readers would understand the illusion. Everybody catch that? Maybe you've read Revelation before and you're just not even thinking about it, but this is the first reference to Babylon. It just poof, gets thrown right in there. It's not like there's this big introduction like what we have with the beast, right? We kind of get this origin story of they're, you know, oh, they're coming out of the ocean and coming out of the earth. And it's like, no, it's just boom, Babylon, right there. So, but John's readers would have understood the reference historically and as a present reality. That's what we're going to unpack a little bit here.
So she is Babylon?
The she is referencing Babylon. So the ancient Mesopotamian city of Babylon had become the political and religious capital of a world empire. It was renowned for its luxury and moral corruption. Above all, it was the great enemy of the people of God. Remember, this great enemy of the people of God was also an instrument of judgment in God's hands because God's people had acted corruptly. For the early church, the city of Rome was a contemporary Babylon. We see this reference coming up. The designation Babylon the Great will be used consistently throughout Revelation, the rest of Revelation, chapter 14, verse eight here, chapter 16, verse nine, chapter 17, verse five. And chapter 18, verse two, 10, and 21. So the designation Babylon the Great goes back to Daniel, chapter four, verse 30. So let's go there. Starting in verse 28, all this happened to Nebuchadnezzar the king. Twelve months later, he was walking on the roof of the royal palace of Babylon. The king reflected and said, is this not Babylon the Great, which I myself have built as a royal residence by the might of my power and for the glory of my majesty? That's a good way of getting God's attention. So I encourage you to read the rest of that chapter, see what happens. But it's that level of arrogance. It's that level of independence from God in making and creating themselves in their own system. That we see that reflection in the beast. The Nebuchadnezzar-like self-importance of the rulers of Rome, rather than the actual size or true greatness of the city. It's a symbol of the spirit of godlessness that in every age lures people away from the worship of the Creator. So imagine, if you will, standing in the middle of Rome or of Babylon, the city, and thinking and knowing God didn't make this, man did. Look what we've accomplished. Anybody else think, like, what that reminds them of? Tower of Babel? Look what we've done, we've made a name for ourselves. We have reached the heavens, the dwelling of the gods. And so here, standing in the midst of a city like that, the heart of the beast. And there's no room for God there. They have forgotten God, the Creator. It is the dark counterpart of Jerusalem, the final manifestation of secular humanism in its attempt to destroy the remaining vestiges of true religion. Society set free from God is its own worst enemy. That's from Mounts. Kaster says, the angel's message is not a simple description, but a warning that is designed to affect readers' commitments. Fallen, fallen is Babylon the Great, she who has made all the nations drink of the wine of the passion of her immorality. So it's a, the angel's message is not a simple description, but a warning that is designed to affect readers' commitments. Knowing that Babylon is doomed to fall should make readers wary of placing any confidence in the city even before they are told what Babylon is. Man. Now, so in the Old Testament, this is from Kaster, Babylon was the power that destroyed the first temple in 587 B.C. And in later chapters, John will extend the name Babylon to Rome specifically, the power that destroyed the second temple in 870. We will see, however, that Babylon is more than a code name for Rome, for John creates a portrait of Babylon that encompasses threats against the people of God from many times and places. So anybody have any questions so far before we go a little bit deeper here? So is everybody tracking Babylon, Rome, just kind of, you know, the reference point here? Because we're going to take, go a little bit into the Old Testament where some of these phrases actually come from. So first thing, let's go to Isaiah, chapter 21. Verse nine, chapter, Isaiah, chapter 21. Now behold, here comes a troop of riders, horsemen in pairs. And one said, fallen, fallen is Babylon. And all the images of her gods are shattered on the ground. Fallen, fallen is Babylon. Also go to Jeremiah, chapter 51. Let's start at verse five. For neither Israel nor Judah has been forsaken by this God, by his God, Yahweh shall vote. Although their land is full of guilt before the Holy One of Israel flee from the midst of Babylon, and each of you save his life. Do not be destroyed in her punishment, for this is Yahweh's time of vengeance. He is going to render recompense to her. Babylon has been a golden cup in the hand of Yahweh, intoxicating all the earth. The nations have drunk of her wine, therefore the nations are going mad. Suddenly Babylon has fallen and been broken. Wail over her, bring balm for her pain, perhaps she may be healed. There you go. So the Lord bringing judgment on Babylon. There's a couple other things I wanted to include here, sorry. So just a little bit more to unpack on the, in John's day, so Jewish writers of John's day saw commonalities among all the empires that subjugated Israel, generally believing that Rome was the final such power. Babylon and its synonym, the Chaldeans, were used as ciphers for Rome in Jewish texts, such as the Dead Sea Scrolls, Fourth Ezra, and the later rabbis, although the rabbis used Edom more frequently. The Old Testament normally reserved the symbolic use of prostitute for the sins of God's people with only two exceptions. But the allusion here is to Babylon in Jeremiah, chapter 51, verse seven, who made all the nations drunk with its wine. Okay, so that is the second angel that we encounter in this chapter. Any questions on the first two angels? Okay? All right. Verse nine. Then another angel, a third one followed them, saying with a loud voice, if anyone worships the beast in his image and receives a mark on his forehead or on his hand, he also will drink of the wine of the wrath of God, which is mixed in full strength in the cup of his anger, and he will be tormented with fire and brimstone in the presence of the holy angels and in the presence of the Lamb. And the smoke of their torment goes up forever and ever. They have no rest, day and night, those who worship the beast in his image and whoever receives the mark of his name. Here is the perseverance of the saints who keep the commandments of God and their faith in Jesus. And I heard a voice from heaven saying, write, blessed are the dead who die in the Lord from now on. Yes, says the Spirit, so that they may rest from their labors, for their deeds follow with them. So verses nine through 11 form a counter proclamation to that of the image in chapter 13. There it was decreed that those who would not worship the image should be killed and that those without the mark of the beast should be able neither to buy nor to sell. Now, the third angel of chapter 14 announces a much worse fate for those who do worship the beast and bear his mark. They are to drink the wine of God's fury and endure eternal torment in burning sulfur. This fierce warning is directed both to the pagan population and to those within the Christian community tempted to deny their faith in view of the coming persecution. That the warning is directed at apostate Christians as well, follows from John's added comments in verses 12 and 13, which speak of the coming trial and promised blessedness for those who die in the Lord. 12 and 13, here is the perseverance of the saints who keep the commandments of God and their faith in Jesus. And I heard a voice from heaven saying, write, blessed are the dead who die in the Lord from now on. Yes, says the Spirit, so that they may rest from their labors, for their deeds follow with them. Boy, how'd you, how would you be feeling if, you know, you had just burned incense and worshiped to Caesar the day before? Or were contemplating knowing that your day was coming tomorrow? It's a great question.
I mean, was it, you know,
Yeah. So, yeah, so the question is, is that something that they could ask for forgiveness for? So there's, Jesus lines out one unpardonable sin. Which is attributing the works of the Holy Spirit to Satan and vice versa. Like, literally, textually, that's, that's what it is. I know there's a lot that people spiral off of that, but that's the one that Jesus lines out. In this regard of accepting the mark, burning incense to Caesar, I mean, let's just flat out, so to, to be a proclaim, like, to, to declare your allegiance to Jesus. a proclaim, like to, to declare your allegiance to Jesus and to go back on that and to worship Caesar, I would not want to face God after that. Yes, absolutely repent, absolute, I mean, God is judge. And we know His grace and but He's also just. But I think exactly what John's saying here, He is warning absolutely everybody. We'll get there. We will get there. Yeah. So, I mean, this is, you know, the, this is playing for keeps. I mean, you know, we don't really live with a lot of allegiances. We don't even understand, like, lordship in this day and age. Like fealty, like granting our allegiance to an individual, to, you know, just our loyalties, what that means, like to compromise. And, and it's hard for us to understand this, especially if for any period of time, we've just lived as nominal Christians. If. I mean, just gonna say it, like this is, we, we have all collectively lived in cultural Christianity, fully accepted, where this is a thing we do. And this is something that if we're really serious about it, we can go to Bible studies and we can do, you know, and like, there's our own tiers that we can move up in and, you know. But what's it gonna look like in a period of persecution?
What's it gonna look like in another 10 years?
Right. It, well, and even, even a few years. I mean, you know, if you go back through history, things turn, turn on a dime. Right? I mean, it's not always the majority that takes over. It's actually like a very ruckus minority that takes over and all of a sudden, like, everything's changed. It's the silent majority that just lets it happen. And suffers the consequences of it. Historically. And so, so yeah, things change on a dime. So I mean, you don't have to go out 10 years, it could happen at any moment. It just is. But the question for us is what, like, what does our dedication and allegiance look like? And I mean, you know, some of us might just need to be like in the thick of it to then take it seriously. Right? You know, it's like, you know, we'll skip practice or we won't take practice serious, but man, we're ready for the game. We think we are. Till it's game time and we're surprised we get benched. Maybe I should have showed up at practice. But it's still, it's one of those things that like, you know, and, and even just to use analogies like a game or practice and stuff like that, just, it doesn't do it justice. I mean, there's so much at stake. Everything is at stake. And I don't think any of us have anything like that going on in our lives where it's either compromise Christ or lose everything, including your life. And including the lives of your loved ones, everyone you love and hold dear. That's weighing in the balance. And it's moving forward in our lives understanding what's in the balance. Living out of that allegiance to Christ. And that comes from believing the words that are recorded in this book and, in this vision. To know the consequences. To compromise our allegiance to Christ. To say this over here is proclaiming our allegiance to the beast, to the world. And by doing that, we are compromising the testimony that we would have to all of those that we hold dear. The problem is that it comes up to that point and it's one or the other. Right? But we usually don't get there. There's a million points of compromise leading up to that. Like, that's hard enough to imagine. But if we can live with that level of allegiance to Jesus, what does the rest of our life look like? Is, I mean, if there's sin in our life and we see that as rebellion against Christ, might get a little shot in the arm of like, oh, I need to put that down. That has no place in my life. Because that's me just, just flippantly using the blood of Christ to cover these selfish, ridiculous sins. So, yeah, I mean, you know, what does that look like for someone who does compromise? And mind you, like, this was a big issue in the early Roman church. I mean, when there were periods of persecution, 100s and 200s. And by the mid to late 200s. Right? There was this whole movement and there was this big question of, hey, for all the people that refused to renounce Christ, who lost loved ones, who, who were still living, by the way, right? Because many of them had died. But the ones that were still living, who had been maimed, who had been ostracized. And then all of a sudden, a Roman emperor comes in who is Christian, right? By the mid 300s, early 300s. And then you have this church in Rome. And you have all these people who've been maimed, who have been ostracized for years. Oh yeah, sitting next to the ones that did burn incense, who did worship Caesar. As a leader of that fellowship, what do you do? And there were many who didn't want to worship with them. Oh yeah, by the way, the ones that did compromise were the wealthiest ones because they got to retain all of their wealth and property and probably snatch up some more of those who had lost their lives. Many church leaders refused to accept those members, the ones that did compromise, back in. It just so happens, the bishop of Rome accepted all of them. Guess which one became the wealthier, more powerful church? And the rest is history. So. But I mean, that's where, that's where it came from. That's where it started. And it came, you know, and somebody could, you know, easily argue, oh, well, that came from a point of grace. They've, they've apologized, they've repented. They're never going to do that again until the next emperor comes. So, so this was a really big issue throughout church history. What would it look like here in the United States? Mind you, we're all assuming we would be on the right side. So. Yeah, I mean, this is, this is hard and, you know, and this is the stuff that really kind of sticks with us because we could talk about this as happening sometime in the future. It's somebody else's problem to deal with. But that's not why John's recording this. That's not why the vision was given to John in the first place. This was to his congregations, the churches that he was presiding over and leading. Because he was seeing this firsthand. That's why I, I love, you know, pointing these things out like 12 and 13 as, hey, here's what it looks like to be loyal, to have your allegiance to Christ. Because he's not just telling them what not to do, he's telling them what to do. And the eternal ramifications of what we do in this life. Because, and that is something that we have to understand, and I don't think we talk about enough, is eternity. Right? That this life goes so fast. Amen? So fast. Guys. This is like, we've not even walked through the door into eternity. Right? Awaiting our resurrection to a life forevermore. And it's in this section that we get to hear about one of the consequences of compromise. It, it's a matter of, like, John is talking up these people who he has discipled that their allegiance to Christ should be so pronounced, so overwhelming in their life. They're not thinking about retirement. They're thinking about, man, I could carry that one into eternity. I mean, they're thinking martyrdom. They're like, that's a crown I can take into eternity because Christ is worthy. Can we get to that point? And in the same way that we entertain little sins, can we actually transform that into doing the little things which turn out to be big things for Christ? You know, like sharing the gospel with somebody. It might just take 30 seconds or even just doing something or sharing something with them. Food, money, the shirt off your back, whatever it might be. Like, that's, that's the exciting part, is just to be completely sold out. There is nothing about this faith that is like, oh, well, you know, I'll be a little bit in on this. Just slightly committed. And this is the problem with honestly, how we share the gospel. Like, even if we just share that Jesus is Savior and what He's done, it's, like, trust me, that is awesome and that is enough. But it's the lordship piece. It's understanding who Jesus is as the King over the earth. And what this is gonna look like, that's always a missing piece out of our gospel. We call Him Lord, but we never unpack what that means. This is what it means. Like what we're seeing in this section. And what we're about to read in the coming chapters is His reclaiming of the earth for all of us. He wants those who have already proven their loyalty and allegiance to Him to be with Him forever. So it's not about you, it's about Him. It's all directed to Him. You just either have to get with the program or not. So this is good news, is that we've actually heard this, that we have the full testimony of God's word in front of us. And we have an understanding of what God actually expects from us. And these are the words of life. So that it's kind of taken all the guesswork out. There's some things literally to follow, and then there's a whole lot of other things that really just kind of get contextualized as we're walking through this life. Even on the other side of the world, here in the United States. And that's how we sort these things out. We prove our allegiance every single day in every way. So we don't have to just wait for that one moment where everything hangs in the balance. So it's practice now, right? But, oh wait, it's actually while we're breathing, it's game time. So. Yeah, I mean, this is heavy, heavy stuff. And I think like, I mean, a lot of us, I mean, just have that level of compassion. We'd be totally fine if there wasn't a lake of fire. But then again, a lot of us, we've just never had anybody get killed for following Christ either. And it's not just a matter of vengeance. It's also understanding how wrong this all is. The depth of sin and how much it's corrupted everything. So. That was a tangent. All right. Just in the same way that as we're talking about this, like, the world makes Christians out to be haters. And there's plenty of them out there. But, I mean, even just in the level of compassion that, I mean, I, I can see it on everybody's faces as we're reading about this. Like even, I mean, we just read about these entities that are killing people, killing Christians for not accepting a mark and everything else, but we still don't want to see these people end up burning like this for eternity. And, and but then we take that for like how we talk about sin. I mean, that's the thing is when we're talking to people about their sin, like, I mean, it should be from a position of love. It should be from a position of caring for them. And if, man, if you're not scared, I'm scared for you. Like, that's why I'm here. It's having that level of compassion and tact and decency and all those things. Right? Yeah, and that's. But you know what? I think at some degree, we just shouldn't care what the world calls us, but. Oh, yeah. Yeah, now is not the time to give up. Like, that is not, that is not what we're reading. Like, at what point did John just say, give up? Hey, guys, like, go hide in caves and stuff like that. Actually, actually, no, there's a whole different group hiding in caves. We'll get there. But like, but the whole idea was
Keep fighting.
To keep fighting, to, to stay strong in proclaiming the good news and holding to the testimony, right? Keeping the commandments of God and their faith in Jesus. So, yeah. I mean, to John, that's what perseverance looks like. So absolutely. So, okay, let me continue. Mounts has got quite a few good things here.
What verse are we on?
Yes, verse nine. That's, that was, that was a fair question. It really was. So those who worship the beast will also So, "Those who worship the beast will also suffer the wrath of God. This wrath is often pictured in the Old Testament as a drought, a draught of wine." We see this in Job, in Psalms, in Isaiah, in Jeremiah. "The nations to whom the cup of God's wrath is given shall stagger and go mad, get drunk and vomit and fall to rise no more." Jeremiah 25, verse 16 and 27. "God's wrath is not merely the outworking of impersonal laws of retribution built into the structure of reality, but the response of a righteous God to people's adamant refusal to accept his love." So the Greek word refers to anger that is passionate and vehement. "The wine of God's fury is said to be poured full strength into the cup of his wrath." "So the participle, which literally means mixed, was used of the preparation of wine by the addition of various spices." Did anybody catch that? So, the the wine of God's fury is said to be poured full strength into the cup of his wrath. So back then, they would make like a spiced wine. And so that mixing is the same word that is used in this phrasing. So the adjective unmixed refers to the practice of diluting the wine with water. When taken in a literal sense, the clause says that the wrath of God is mixed so as to increase its strength. Unmixed, not diluted with water. The participle mixed, however, had come to mean properly prepared and then poured out. So the angel is saying that those who defect to emperor worship will drink the wine of God's wrath, poured out in full strength, untempered by the mercy and grace of God. So, in case you kind of missed what he was talking about there. So, verse 10, "You also drink of the wine of the wrath of God, which is mixed in full strength in the cup of his anger." What, does anybody else have any phrasing, different phrasing there? Verse 10, the first part there.
It has been full, been poured full strength into God's cup of wrath.
Okay, so a lot of the translators are capturing that, that full strength. So it's being mixed, but it's not being diluted, it's being strengthened. I think we're gonna go ahead and, yeah, let me keep going here. "The torment of those who worship the beast is to be with burning sulfur, a figure taken from God's judgment upon Sodom and Gomorrah, and used repeatedly in the final chapters of Revelation, chapter 19, chapter 20, and 21." So, uh, let's go ahead and go back to Genesis, chapter 19, verse 28, just for a reminder. 19. Verse 28. Actually, 27, 28. "Now Abraham rose early in the morning and went to the place where he had stood before Yahweh, and he looked down toward Sodom and Gomorrah, and toward all the land of the valley, and he saw, and behold, the smoke of the land ascended like the smoke of a furnace." And then Luke 17. Verse 29. Actually, 28 and 29. "It was the same as happened in the days of Lot. They were eating, they were drinking, they were buying, they were selling, they were planting, they were building. But on the day that Lot went out from Sodom, it rained fire and brimstone, brimstone also sulfur, from heaven, and destroyed them all. It will be just the same on the day that the Son of Man is revealed." Hey, let's just go ahead and keep reading here. "On that day, the one who is on the housetop and whose goods are in the house must not go down to take them out, and likewise, the one who is in the field must not turn back. Remember Lot's wife. Whoever seeks to keep his life will lose it, and whoever loses his life will preserve it." Wow. It's kind of relevant for our discussion, right? "Whoever seeks to keep his life will lose it, and whoever loses his life will preserve it." So, "That we are dealing with a rather obvious apocalyptic symbol should not lead us to take it lightly. The intention of the proclamation is to startle readers into the realization of the eternal consequences of denying their faith in Christ and worshiping the beast. It is not the appropriate time to discuss the semantics of symbol and hyperbole. This torment takes place in the very presence of the Lamb and his holy angels." In Luke 12, 29, Jesus says that "those who disown him before others will be disowned before the angels of God." So Luke, chapter 12. Let's go there. Starting at verse eight, "And I say to you, everyone who confesses me before men, the Son of Man will confess him also before the angels of God. But he who denies me before men will be denied before the angels of God." Oh, hey, and just so that, you know, clarify what I said earlier. "And everyone who speaks a word against the Son of Man, it will be forgiven him; but he who blasphemes against the Holy Spirit, it will not be forgiven him." "When they bring you before the synagogues and the rulers and the authorities, do not worry about how or what you are to speak in your defense, or what you are to say, for the Holy Spirit will teach you in that very hour what you ought to say." And it doesn't even say your theology has to be perfect either. This should be comforting, right? "To suffer in the presence of the Host of Heaven is not to lessen the fierceness of the judgment, but to make it more grievous." So what we're talking about here, verse 10, "You also drink of the wine of the wrath of God, which is mixed in full strength in the cup of his anger, and he will be tormented with fire and brimstone in the presence of the holy angels and in the presence of the Lamb. And the smoke of their torment goes up forever and ever. They have no rest day and night, those who worship the beast and his image, and whoever receives the mark of his name." "Christians had borne the shame of public derision and opposition. Soon their antagonists will suffer before a more before a more august gathering." It was a common idea in Jewish apocalyptic that the suffering of the damned is increased by beholding the bliss of the righteous. Second Estrus compares the place of refreshment with the pit of torment, and the paradise of delight with the furnace of Gehenna, calling upon those who have been raised for judgment to look and consider whom they have denied, and to view fire and torment in comparison with delight and refreshment. The book of Enoch speaks of the kings of the earth burning as the straw in the fire before the face of the holy. Verse Enoch 48, verse nine. Also, Second Baruch, chapter 30, verse four. "In Revelation, there is no suggestion," just a reminder, I am citing some of these apocry- apocalyptic, apocalyptic, they are, apocryphal works, also because they were contemporary with John. So other people that was reading this would have read, Second Estrus would have read, First Enoch would have read, Second Baruch, like all these other books. So, it just kind of lines up with some of those. "In Revelation, there is no suggestion that the suffering of the damned takes place in the presence of martyred believers who now rejoice to see their oppressors burning in hell. It is the holy angels and even the Lamb who witness divine retribution upon the wicked." So that should be clarifying. Any questions before we move to 11? Yeah, that was, that was just nine and 10. Okay. Verse 11, "And the smoke of their torment goes up forever and ever. They have no rest day and night, those who worship the beast and his image, and whoever receives the mark of his name." Keener writes, "The eternal smoking of Edom night and day is described in similar terms in Isaiah 34, verse 10. But there, the meaning is desolation, whereas here, it is eternal burning and torment." On the alternative. Yeah. "So the punishment of the damned is not a temporary measure. The smoke of their torment rises forever and ever. Without hope of acquittal, they pay the eternal price of having chosen evil over righteousness." "A number of modern writers point out that the doctrine of hell is offensive to modern people, yet the teaching of the New Testament on the eternal consequences of willfully rejecting the love of God, as manifested in the death of Christ for our sins, does not allow us to put the doctrine aside as sub-Christian or reinterpret it in such a way as to remove the abrasive truth of eternal punishment. It was Jesus, more than anyone else, who spoke of the fires of hell. Better to enter life maimed, he said, than having two hands to go to hell where the fire never goes out." Mark, chapter nine, verse 44. "The story of the rich man tormented in the fires of hell who begged to have Lazarus dip his finger in water to cool his tongue, Luke 16, verses nine through 31, was narrated by none other than Jesus himself. After due allowance is made for the place of symbolism and apocalyptic, what remains in these verses is still the terrifying reality of divine wrath poured out upon those who persist in following the Antichrist. What the angel has proclaimed so vividly must not be undermined by well-intentioned euphemisms." Basically, a lot of people try to explain this away. Like, a just God or a loving God wouldn't do this, or eternal really doesn't mean eternal, forever and ever doesn't mean forever and ever. Different things like that. So. Also, at this point, I just want to remind everybody, we are not talking about disembodied spirits. If you haven't read 1 Corinthians 15 lately, highly recommend it because it is, actually, let me see here. I'm not gonna read it, trust me. No, no. That's 58 verses. I'll let, that's homework. But Paul goes into, like, I mean, full bore, into what the resurrection is all about. The mystery of the resurrection. But the first and the second. But the important piece here, it's not just believers being resurrected. What we'll see at the end of this book, everybody, absolutely everyone, those who believe and follow Christ and those who don't. Nero will be resurrected. Some to life, some to judgment. This whole idea of disembodied spirits, of our souls, like, going off and residing with the Lord, is not biblical at all. We are full flesh and blood. I mean, man, post-resurrection, we could high five. We will be back on this earth with the Lord reigning over us to see the sun and the moon, to, to feel the rain, to go for a swim, to taste fruit. And hopefully by that time, actually, I was gonna make some comments. Go ahead. Yeah, it's the new heaven and new earth, or renewed heaven and renewed earth. You mean pork barbecue? That's another whole matter we can talk about, but, no, I'm just kidding. But yeah, no, actually, I mean, yeah, no, it's, I mean, barbecues and, I mean, we will be eating well. And, I mean, but that's that's the blessing, right? I mean, that's, you know, celebrating the feast of tabernacles in his presence. So that is the future for us as believers. What we're reading about here is the future for those who accept the mark, for those who have their allegiance to the beast. They will be resurrected to this punishment where the fires are not quenched. So, in case we wanted to like buffer how horrific this really is, by thinking that like, oh, you know, like, how well does a soul burn anyways, like, you know? We never really think about it like that, but in case you ever did, like, no, I mean, if you've ever been burned, it doesn't compare to this. This is every fiber of your being burning forever and ever. Many will quote, I think it's 1 Corinthians 10, "To be absent of the body is to be present in the Lord, with the Lord." I would just maintain that. No, no, that is absolutely not in view here. No, nobody turns into, unless the Lord gives you a message. Not to confuse everything here, but for the reference. You just gave like a few of your headaches, it's okay. But, my, personally, I think that when we die, we step out of, like, this time, this dimension. You close your eyes, the important piece here is that when you open them, you will be in the presence of the Lord. No, no purgatory. No purgatory. No, you couldn't. That's okay. So, um, yeah, I mean, we talked about that a few times, I think, in Sunday Night Seminar. I think I've unpacked some of these theories before, but, you know, hopefully what you just heard was kind of like a real abbreviated version that kind of cuts through a lot more of the contentious stuff. But, uh, for what I've said before, here in a few chapters, that's going to become super relevant. So. But we'll get there eventually. So, verse 12. Any other questions on 11? It's horrible, ugly resurrection. Okay, great. So, "Here is the perseverance of the saints, or the holy ones, to keep the commandments of God and their faith in Jesus." to keep the commandments of God and their faith in Jesus. Okay. How can I get in trouble with this one? So.
Pretty straightforward.
You would think. So, John's comment is, I'm gonna read from Mount's, just to be safe. John's comment is followed by a voice from heaven that declares, "Blessed are the dead who die in the Lord." The connection with verse 12 is clear. Faithfulness to Christ may issue in martyrdom, but the faithful dead are blessed in that they have entered victoriously into their rest. If verse 12 was negative encouragement, verse 13 is positive. The voice from heaven is not specifically identified, it is probably not the Spirit, and that in the latter portion of the verse, the Spirit is pictured as responding to the voice. More important is the fact that a proclamation from heaven carries divine authority. The command to write emphasizes the importance of the message that follows. The beatitude is the second of seven to be found in Revelation. So, blessed are the dead. That's a beatitude, right? It pronounces blessed those who meet death in a state of spiritual union with Christ Jesus. They stand in sharp contrast to the apostates who have denied their faith, and the pagans who have never accepted it. For the latter, death leads to judgment and eternal loss. Most commentators connect from now on with the preceding clause. Those who die in the Lord from that time on are blessed. But this seems to imply that from that point on, a special blessedness is connected with the death of the faithful that sets them apart from believers who have died previously. Others connect the phrase with the following clause. Henceforth, says the Spirit, they may rest from their labors. Everybody see the distinction there? So, this requires the omission of the word yes. The apparent implication that gave rise to these alternatives, however, is more imaginary than real. To assure those facing the prospect of martyrdom, that to die in the Lord is to enter into eternal blessedness, is not to deny the same reward to those saints who previously died in less trying circumstances. From now on marks the transition into the more active persecution of those who hold unswervingly to their faith. To this pronouncement of blessedness, the Spirit adds the emphatic affirmation, yes, indeed. The blessedness consists in the cessation of all the trials and sufferings brought upon the faithful by the demands of emperor worship. The labors from which they rest are not those of normal toil, but the troubles that have arisen from their steadfastness in faith. Their supreme labor is faithfulness unto death. They are blessed because their deeds follow after them. God will not forget all they have endured in loyalty to the faith. So, when you wake up tomorrow, remember that your deeds will follow you. Happy Monday. Like, it's, it's in view. Another thing we don't like to talk about in Christianity, so.
I've got more deeds than you do, or something like that.
That's generally why, yeah. Their deeds are acts of, I think we've all been together long enough, I just need to like look up and like start to say something and catch myself responsibly, and everybody can just laugh. And so, their deeds are acts of steadfastness, resistance to the demands of Antichrist. There's no need to interpret deeds as spiritual attitudes or inward character, nor are we to think of them in the Jewish sense of accompanying the righteous to judgment to win for them divine approval. The faithfulness of the martyrs unto death is not a legalistic work that merits eternal bliss, but a manifestation of their devotion to Christ. These deeds follow them in the sense that there can be no separation between what a person is and what that person does.
Can you say that again?
I will, that's what I was just getting ready to say. These deeds follow them in the sense that there, there can be no separation between what a person is and what that person does. The first one that came to mind, okay, forgive me, the first one that came to mind, put up or shut up? Sorry. Yeah, walk the talk. It get hot in here, so, but, no, I mean, you know, it's, don't just talk it, live it. It is hard, yeah, I mean, it's harder when we're divided. Hope that wasn't on the mic, goodness gracious. Said, when we're divided, at the same time, Jim Ludeman says married. I'm trying to think of specific verses and commentators, but I think by and large, what you see is, especially, I mean, if you were just to read the words of Christ, like, He is demanding allegiance. He's demanding, like, not just words, not just this verbal assent, or even just ideological. I mean, think of Matthew 25, think of, you know, a lot of these, like, the times that He is talking specifically about action. So. I mean, I just point, I went right to Jesus, but as far as other commentators, you know, I think Keener lines up with that, and Kaster, and, you know, Schnabel, and a few others. So, that, I mean, these, this is the inward, we're talking about allegiance, you know, between systems. And what we do, what we say matters. It reflects who our allegiance is. A lot of times, we just think of it as carrying a card, or, you know, having like the mark, or, you know, written across our forehead, or something like that. But like, what's in view is how we live our lives on a daily basis. So, and then that's what comes back to, like, in verse 12, keeping the commandments of God and their faith in Jesus. So, remember, we were talking about the mark before, and it being kind of, you know, like the unholy trinity? It being a mockery of what we read in Deuteronomy 6. Right? And the whole idea was to bind the words of God, bind His commandments to our arm, and to our, or to our hand, and to our forehead. That we would do them, we would think about them, they would just become a part of who we are. So, if you take the opposite of those things, those belong to the world, those belong to the beast. There's no separating just what we think, or what we talk about, and what we do. So, so, key to overcoming the world is overcoming ourselves. So, and with that, leave off right here, and we'll see whether we come back to 12 and 13, or whether we move into the, the reapers in 14. All right, thank you, guys.